As promised, from Hanson by October 15. They are going to provide not only the subcontract lien waivers, but also an overall lien waiver from Hanson, which they can provide now. But then as soon as they pay the rest of their subs, then they'll be able to provide the lien waivers. And then the following allowances are recognized a cost in the contingency calculation and will be placed in the trust account for the city to use to complete the project totaling. 942-910-54 is what it was before our review. Now it's 933-453-86 after our review. We'll explain that, so just bear with me on this. The restroom's fixed allowance, that's change order 77. Paver scope add back is change order 78. Trellis sign add back allowance is number 79. The contingency for pavers, trellis, and final accounting effort is number 80. And then equipment purchases and restroom items are 81 through 84. We know exactly what they are, we know exactly where they go, and they are specifically spelled out in this payout 19. Next one, please. So payout 19. The original draft that we reviewed showed 27,328,511 for the construction budget, which aligns with other documents or the construction costs, I should say. 705,469,62 was the owner contingency, which aligns with other documents. So we just wanted to make sure that it was correct and it tied in all the accounting, and it does. Line item 17 through 20 are allowances that have been billed 100%. So we can get you a copy of the payout if you want to see this, which lines, essentially goes line by line. And then line item 38 through 42 shows the allowances for items that have not yet been designed or priced. Hanson billed their 3% construction fee for these allowances, and they have revised it based on their payout. So in other words, they charged $28,000 for items that had not been billed or designed. So then what we did is we said, you've got to take that out. They reduced their fee accordingly. The $28,000 went back into the system for quote unquote a credit. So that credit was $28,287.32. What? And a pause there, so the number $947,000 was the original number we had essentially calculated for, that was the outstanding items. Now it's 933,000. The reason it changed is Hanson, in total of all of their items, came to $31,337,000 and change. The number that we had targeted at the 914 meeting was 31,300,000. So it's $37,000 higher than what we were setting all of the documentation up to close at. So $28,000 of that essentially was a credit. And then we reduced the quote unquote allowances in that 942 accordingly. So it's money that hadn't been spent, nor is it money that had been confirmed. So the $28,000 credit came out of Hanson's pay and essentially went towards the total number of 933. I know it's confusing, but ultimately, we needed to make sure that Hanson was paid only what Hanson should be paid. And then the proper credit essentially reduced $37,000 out of the total that went into escrow. And so we received that payout late this afternoon. We checked it and all the numbers check out. It just means that the amount that goes into escrow is less than what was originally anticipated, but the city has not spent it nor borrowed for it. So that was, I guess, the pause there. Are there any questions with that whole kind of gymnastics within the numbers?
Is the revised 933 for the added features, does that impact any of the features that were originally planned? And I know I'm kind of posing this to you, but as best you know, are we not going to be able to fulfill the pavers, the trellis, the bathrooms, the things to the extent that we had intended because we're not reducing that amount?
That's a great question, and there is a ton of subjectivity in how, I would respond to that. It really depends on timing in the market, and it really depends on how far you go with scope. Could you do what's proposed? Yes, I believe you can. It's just a matter of how far do you go with it? So a bit of subjectivity, actually, I believe, timing of those and pausing and waiting is in your favor, so that you can wait until some of this chaos stops and how market, right, exactly. So I believe so, yes. And it's just a matter of if you plan to pick up on that next year, it's probably a better condition in the market to do that. So then the operations equipment allowance was reduced to 214,569,30 from a 378,000. That 214,569 is shown as a scheduled value on payout 19. The remaining balance of 163,430 and 70 cents was transferred to owner contingency as included in the revised owner contingency log as a line item 75. Adam Plagie is the receiver of any outstanding items that have not yet been received. So what this started as is a note in our review of this to say, we can't figure out where 163 is. Hanson has confirmed it. They revised their owner contingency log accordingly, so now we have a tie for it. So what this is, is really kind of a, we started with a whole list of items, and I'm highlighting the items that have been noted and then resolved. So now we know where it's at, and it's been documented. The contingency for unforeseen conditions, the 199,999, and design and construction coordination of 425 is not shown on the payout application. We did confirm that these contingencies were used for items throughout the project and values were transferred into appropriate SOB line items. So we couldn't find it, but then we confirmed with Hanson that they have been used, and here's where they were used. So we have in the schedule of values and payout 19, you can line out where those items have been spent. All right, so the timeline. So we talked about the city staff Hanson formation. We started on 97, 914, 922, 10-1. We're here today on 10-4. The items that are still outstanding is the certificate pricing and special council meeting on 10-6. That's where Teresa essentially picks up the ball and runs with it from here. The 11-month walk-through, warranty walk, still needs to happen with David, Adam, and Hanson. And then Hanson lien waivers need to show up by 10-15, and then the closing is scheduled for 10-20. So the big note here is essentially woven through our presentation is that the City of Johnston has 31,300,000 as a target number for closing per the 914 meeting. Hanson's payout in summary of total project costs has been revised from 31,337,744 to the target, which increases the project savings. A refined value of 933,453,86 and is included in Hanson's payout application 19 will transfer to an escrow account for completion of the remaining scope items. So essentially, I walked you through a whole lot of crazy numbers, and I always remember sitting through these things when somebody audited the numbers, but I wanted to give you one statement that essentially summed it up and said that it looks as though all of the expenses are appropriate. We did find some things in Hanson's payout that has, they've moved very quickly to revise and refine. They've also closed some loose ends where they didn't have documentation or they didn't have items scheduled. And so in this process, we have those scheduled, we have the refined numbers, we have the refined payout. And this is our final summary of essentially 933,453.86 will go into an escrow account that can be used at the city's discretion, which is included in the 31,300,000 total, which is a million six less than what was originally agreed to back in October 16th of 2019.
I think probably two slides back, if you don't mind going back. You come on that 163,430. That was an amount that, if I understood you correctly, was undocumented charges at that point?
Well, we couldn't figure out where it went, so we asked Hanson to show us where it went. And so then what they did is they said, yep, here's where it is. They have the update, they need to update. The contingency log, as number 75 now shows it, that's where it's at. And then it totals out into the rest of the numbers that we have here.
In your experience, is that common to be able to have that? They didn't have it in the contingency log or didn't have it recorded?
What happened here was that Hanson had to catch up a lot. They had a lot of accounting to catch up with. And so when we met back in early September, they hadn't produced the documentation that we looked through. So that's not a surprise that there would be something like this that they wouldn't have caught in that first rendition. But now they have updated their documents accordingly. There were little errors that we found throughout the process, and then they have done a very good job of working with us. Hey, we found this, where is it at? They're like, okay, here's where it is. Or this document needs to be updated, no different than the final payout was $28,000 heavy on Hanson's benefit that they have now revised and said, okay, we need to reduce it. And then essentially, the overall escrow amount was reduced to get it down to the 31,300. So that's not uncommon.
If I could just add, that was all equipment expenses that have primarily occurred in the last couple of months as we've gotten the site ready to go up and running. And so it's equipment orders from VenueWorks or myself, many of which ran through Hanson and were reimbursed from VenueWorks in their initial expense. So not necessarily that they're 100% behind the ball on that. It's just a lot of these came very quickly at the very tail end of the project as they were getting ready.
And as Hanson went through that description, they said, hey, we've just been kind of the middleman on this, and Adam is the receiver. And so I was concerned about where are the items that are still pending to be delivered? And they go directly to Adam. So Adam will receive any of the outstanding items. They were essentially directed right to him. So it's not like they show up at Hanson and then they need to be delivered to the city, which is a flag in our mind. But if they're going directly to Adam, then we're okay with that.
Very much, not only for answering my very many questions, but for taking a look at it.
Other questions for Matt?
I do have a question. So on the closing date, is it at that time all of the payments will be paid off to the Concertment Plan?
So, yeah, so what happens is that, Teresa might need to step in on this. But when the deal is done and everything's been finalized, then Hanson will pay the retainage. It's essentially at their discretion. And at this point, I wouldn't see any reason not to pay any retainage because I haven't heard of any items that are issues or concerns or anything that's outstanding. And the punch list is so minor that, yeah, it's not a big deal.
How does that affect the warranty? I know some of the plans are putting them in a one-year warranty.
So
Paying out all of the retainings, but we still have one-year on the warranty.
So you have, the one thing that we did not look at is the difference between substantial completion and final completion. And so those are documents that would need to come from OPN in the process to say, hey, when does the warranty start? And that would be a document that OPN would need to issue. And I don't know the date for that. It's typically somewhere between those two. Certificate of substantial and certificate of final completion.
Matt, I don't know if this is in your scope or this is for staff. But so we're writing a check for 31,300,000. I'd like to get sort of a breakdown of, obviously, that's paying for this building. And it's also paying for like the ice skating rink area and the building that's the concession kind of building. And is it also paying for some of the parking lots? Or so, and like I said, I don't know if this is in just your scope, but it'd be helpful for me to be able, if somebody asked me, how much did it cost to build City Hall? It's not fair to say it was 31,300,000, right? It's, so it's a subset of that. So it'd be real helpful if we had that number kind of broken down. And I don't know if that's part of your scope or staff or somebody.
As part of this process, that was the one item that Hanson needed to provide, the breakout between the site and the building. They provided the numbers, but now they're $37,000 off because the revised payout essentially in total project was reduced by 37,000. They do have a breakout between the two that they've already provided that delineates what's in the site, what's in the building, essentially by percentage. But you have something started already for that, which was
And when you say site, though, that includes?
That would be, the building is one piece of it, and then everything else is the other.
And when you say everything else is, I'm just trying to be
Parking lots, amenities, all of the other
Right, okay. For me, it would be helpful at some point, and again, like I said, I don't know if this is for you to do or somebody, but provide, okay. And I don't, it's not something that we need, at least I don't need right away, but at some point, it would be helpful.
Teresa can talk a little bit about how the site and the building are broken out, which whenever the time's right for that, but she's, we've had conversations about how that works.
And then, and maybe this is, the second is a question for Teresa. So we're having a meeting Wednesday night. And can you just enlighten me, one or two sentences, the purposes of that meeting and what we're approving at that meeting? Are we being asked to approve at that meeting or consider?
We're actually going to approve just one resolution. And the resolution is going to be approving basically all the documents, the final documents we have for the financing for the town center. And we'll have the pricing and the interest rate and everything we received as we priced it that morning. So we'll know the numbers and interest rates, and it'll be those, the final documents. I was just telling Cindy that's what I was kind of panicking about when I opened up my board docs. We'll be able to push out that meeting, and you'll actually see the document. It's a pretty long resolution. And the continuing disclosure document, like you usually have to do for a bond sale, that tells you what it's about. So you'll just have one action item. Paul Donna, the broker from RW Baird, will be calling in from Minneapolis. He'll be the one that's pricing it and all that stuff in the morning. And then Matt Stufel, of course, will be here that night.
Okay.
And we will have a, we definitely had to have a breakdown, a difference between the building and the site. And this building is getting paid for through property tax dollars. The site, all the infrastructure, all the amenities, all the things happening around it are getting paid for from tax increment financing dollars. So we have two separate funding streams coming in. So we had to have that divided up by Hanson, so that's what we'll do.
And when you say the site, the building, so
Building is City Hall.
Okay.
Only City Hall.
Right, and like the parking lot back behind City Hall, which is clearly used almost exclusively by City Hall, is that part of the tip funding?
That's why we're saying that part of it is percentage, because then we had to pretty much guess how much of the parking was part of this building and whatever. And so the percentage But we had to have the infrastructure, the water, and all the sewer for this building as well, so.
Cool. So is that in the 13 million or it's, okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt?
No, staff would, me personally, would really like to thank Matt for his work and his company for his work. And I thank the council for allowing us to hire Matt. You know, this is, in my 40 years of local government, this was a new deal for me. And the lease purchase and how we went through this whole process and the fact that we weren't getting numbers and we were going to have to come up with, you know, the largest borrowing I've ever had to do. I wanted someone that was an outsider, different eyes, to really look at those numbers. I really wanted to make sure that the percentage, although as Matt explained to me, that percentage that we were charged, the three and the three, is industry-wide is pretty low for, as according to other projects. But I didn't know where that number was coming in at, and I didn't want to just get a big number and have no idea what that 3% was on and not on. And so I just, I just really appreciate Matt's help. And he's the one who, we had been trying for months to get numbers, months and months and months. And Matt was able to get the numbers, so thank you so much, Matt. And I can't remember what that gentleman's name was.
Ben.
Ben, thanks.
Ben's actually the, he's the spreadsheet, he's the number whiz, but
But you left him back at the office.
Yeah, he doesn't like But he's really good at numbers, and he fired through that very quickly and found a lot of the issues. And so then we just followed up on those. But back to what Teresa had said, and I appreciate you bringing it up because she had said, hey, could you mention this? The, we had it in the presentation, there's a 3% on the construction and 3% as a developer fee. And in my former life, I pushed hard for the three and three because there had been other projects where that wasn't as transparent, at least in the lease purchase side of things. The 3% for a construction fee and a 3% for developer fee is actually low. Typically, you'll see about a 5% for construction fee and about a 10% for developer fee. So you bought at 6% what would normally be around 15. The argument is, I wanted to make sure it held water if it was ever tested to say, hey, were the fees appropriate and fair? And I also appreciate, in a way, the pride and ownership of the ability to look at this and say, hey, Hanson, your number's wrong, because we could go back and prove it. So then if it does need to go through some test or scrutiny, it should hold up, no problem. Especially when it gets to, oh, there might have been so much extra money spent on fee. So I give credit to Hanson for developing a beautiful project. They did it in a very timely fashion, and they developed it at a fee that was very reasonable, especially in the climate that, you know, essentially this construction project led into. So I think that the numbers, and so thank you for that. And I just want to make sure that you know that I feel like the city got a good deal on this. So I think it was a true, good use and stewardship of the city's money and the taxpayers' money in order to get this project done.
Matt, I want to add to what Teresa's already said. Thank you for doing this, all of your great work on this. Obviously, you know, having someone with your eye going through the numbers, you know, builds our confidence and, you know, underscores our confidence in, you know, what's being provided to us through Hanson, because you have looked at it. So, you know, we felt very good about the project before. Now we feel even better now that you've done this analysis and report to us. So thank you very much.
I would just add that I think it would be helpful, I don't know if it's after Wednesday's meeting or whatever, if Janet or something does some sort of communication about the fact that the project came in under budget. And it was, especially, it's used, we used a process that's now been made illegal by the state legislature. Maybe that's something that they should reconsider.
I agree with that because I think it needs to be advertised. And we have a client that we're working with that's acquiring a site potentially in Johnston, and we asked them to come through this building because we wanted to show it as an example. And we were talking about just the general, we had just received the split of the two. So the building versus the site. The dollars per square foot for the building included design, included furniture, included equipment, included all of the things that you would not normally have in a project. You bought this building for about the same price as a raw building would cost now, with all of the other things included. So I know there's a little bit of ambiguity as to how the site paving splits out and some of those things, but still, it was, I would say that, I feel really good about, in my experience, of how well it was purchased because there is a ton of subjectivity. When you have a million three in allowances, we've seen a lot of projects where those get gobbled up very quickly. And very rarely do you see, especially, I was a bit worried that, as Teresa had said, Hanson had not provided very good accounting. And so we pressed hard, we need this document, this document, this document. And they did a really nice job of providing it. And the numbers, they've stuck to their numbers, other than there was a little, which, that $28,000 is not an uncommon mistake. That's, that was totally, yep, could have expected that. But then they were able to say, hey, and here's where those others went that we questioned.
Right.
So, yes, if nothing more to say, I would feel very confident in what's been purchased. And I can go out and say confidently that this is a very good project that was done very well.
Council makes a very good point. You were up at the legislature when we fought the battle on lease purchase. And I think that we need to, we need to think about how we tell the story, about how this really was a good deal for our community because they have this mindset that, you know, designed to build is the only way you can do things.
Lowest bidder.
Yeah.
And sometimes
Matt, about those things that we were just saying about the advantages that this building had. But the benefits of the lease purchase and how it came out better than industry standards in terms of the cost. You know, if you can capture some of that stuff now, have it written up into a story, then we always will have.
Exactly.
It's great to have that available while you're right now.
Especially when you compare it to the public safety building, which was a low bid type deal. It was a mitigated, unmitigated disaster. So, and so, yeah, I think sort of, that'd be good to compare and contrast it. Matt had a lot of experience in trying to help us solve that problem too, so.
That one was a totally different, that was the opposite end of the spectrum.
And clearly having Hanson be the contractor on this project as opposed to
That's a, there's a success story there as well.
Yeah.
Knowing what happened with the public safety building and the Hanson thing, which wasn't really Hanson's fault, but then having, I brought that up just a couple of weeks ago and say, hey, what a success story to see how Hanson has delivered this project in the way they have.
Okay, we have a couple of other items we need to get to tonight. Thank you, Matt, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item 3C, Capital Improvement Plan 2022, 2022, 23 through 26, 27. Discussion Parks Department.
Good evening. I've asked Cindy, before I get into, we go directly into the parks detail. I've asked Cindy to pull up the CIP, last year's CIP, that is in board docs under the library. And I think Cindy, you actually, oh, good, good job. We actually went to that Parks Department. I just want to remind you of our new software that we have, it's called Planet. And when you get into the CIP and there's a summary by project department, if you'd scroll down the next page, Cindy, then each project, and I can't remember if I ever really discussed this with you, Councilwoman Burkhart, but then behind each summary for each department, we have these detailed project sheets, which actually name the project, excuse me, provide a description of the project and a justification for the project. And then the second page of the item is usually a picture of the project. In this case, we didn't have a picture of the rendering at that time. So this was just showing you where the Trestle Bridge was. So this was just new software and a new planning tool last year that we used for the Parks Department or for all departments for the capital improvement plan. So as the departments start bringing forward their capital improvement plans for next year and the upcoming five, four years, five years, I just wanted to remind you that the entire document is out there under the library portion of the board docs. Cindy's kind of showing you where that's at, library. And then there's an actual 21, 22 through 25, 26 capital improvement plan. It's under the budget tab. I don't know why I'm losing my voice, I apologize about that. So now we'll just jump to tonight's item.
Teresa, can I just interrupt you? That item there that Teresa just sort of, I mean, Cindy just highlighted. So that's what we approved last year? Okay.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Right, that's the one we're in right now.
Right, and so we'll obviously be looking at a new updated one this year, but
And that's, and that's what we'll be doing starting tonight. And over the next month and a half to two months before we get our public hearings started, we're going to have the departments come to the council meetings and talk to you about their projects. Cindy, if you could put up the other one I just added tonight. I realize, council, that this is, I added one, and I apologize. It's in board docs. But I knew one of you would ask me, and it was my fault, I forgot to do this Friday when I uploaded the whole item, is that you were going to ask me what was changed in the one that I gave you on Friday. And so the one on your screen right now, I'm just going to show you or tell you about the few changes. And then John can get up here and tell you about the projects and why they changed them. But if you'll notice, the one in pink is the only totally new project that he added to the capital improvement plan. All the other projects that are listed in there are projects that you saw last year in the CIP. We might have, if they're highlighted, that means I've done something to them or John's asked me to do something to them. In particular, I've drawn an arrow, they moved out a year. So the $300,000 project moved out two years. The Ignite Public Park Improvements, that, there's three amounts listed. There was only 100,000 and 500,000. And so that 600,000, you could say is kind of new, but in reality, it was originally 100,000 and 500,000. Now we're at 100,000, 600,000, and 500,000. So we've added 500 total thousand over the years. But John's process for his department is that he takes all of his projects to the park board. They reviewed these last week. He came in, into my office, and we sat down and collectively created the new document. Now I'll have John come up, and he probably has a voice, I guess, and talk about the specifics of the department, how this is going to work over the next few months.
Teresa, can I just ask you one real quick question? So for instance, the water trail construction.
Yes.
So that was 700,000, that was for this fiscal year we're in right now.
Yes.
And we're pushing it back a year. So did we borrow that 700,000?
No, no, we did not.
Okay, so some, so just kind of based on how the timing kind of goes, we may bar, but so we, it's not like we've got 700,000 sitting in the bank that, okay.
No, we knew we were going to push that one out. And none of the ones we pushed out actually did we borrow because the Trestle, the Trestle, we're using local option sales teams, 24, if you remember. But how this process works then, if you remember, will come forward with department after department after department. And then towards, I think I didn't bring my budget calendar, but I think towards November, hopefully we've wrapped them all together. hopefully we've wrapped them all together. Um, I have a, um, preliminary idea of maybe where our evaluations are going to come in. And I can do kind of a rough estimate of a plan of finance for the plan. And then we come back with the total item. And then we talk through projects, we re-prioritize, we remove things around based on what we can afford, what we can't afford. And then we'll have a public hearing. We'll try to adopt this. I'd like to get this adopted before you start working, um, in depth on the, in the budget, which is in January. So we usually try to get this done. So I have the big projects out of the way before we start working on the details. So, um, that's the game plan at this point. So, um, John, I'll let you come up.
Teresa, before you slip away, I'm still a little confused about what, um, this coding indicates. The, um, the pink at the top, 100,000, that's new.
Totally new. You've never seen that.
And then the yellow?
This means I've moved it a year.
Okay. But we've got $100,000 down there for Ignite that's in this year.
And that's because.
Okay. So it's changed, but some of it's still there. What's the 165 behind Dewey Park? That has an arrow through it.
We had, um, originally we had 200 and 250. Oh, you'll answer that. Okay.
The 165, and we brought it back to the council, Johnston Commons, the playground there. Because we switched to a, a fully wheelchair accessible playground, we had to utilize the funds from Dewey Park up into Johnston Commons. So we kept that money in Johnston or in Dewey Park so that it was acknowledged, even though we're going to use it at Johnston Commons. And then we, uh, rebudgeted for the playground and the, uh, the, uh, restroom facility. And Dewey, so.
Okay. So the actual expenditures at Dewey would be next year and the following year.
Correct, correct.
And the 165 goes to?
Really Johnston Commons, correct.
That's clear. Okay, go ahead, John.
Okay. I will go ahead and, um, just kind of take you really quick through. I know we are, uh, coming to an end with the, uh, with the work session here, but, uh, just so you have an idea with each of the projects. As Teresa alluded to, we did not change or, or we did not add a bunch of new projects. The one new project that we did add, uh, Simpson Barn is one that the council has seen over the last, uh, oh, really about four years in various forms, uh, as decision packages, um, for Simpson Barn. The floor and the HVAC system are completely outdated. And it's getting tougher and tougher to actually utilize the facility. The whole, the floor has holes everywhere. We want to maintain that built, that barn feel. So the idea that we got with the bids was to be able to take the floor up, put an underlayment and put the floor right back down. So it still will have that feel of a barn, but we just will have more support for it. Um, when we do that, we have to improve the HVAC. There is no air conditioner upstairs. The heating system's radiant heating. And if you're familiar with radiant heating, it dries everything out. And that's what's happening to the walls, the floor. Everything is just drying up and cracking and, and breaking. So we need to fix that. The third part with the Simpson Barn improvement is the back deck. It's probably got another year on it and it needs to be completely replaced. It's, it's falling apart. It's, we, we keep, uh, doing maintenance on it, but it's time that it needs to, uh, be completely replaced. It's, it's a very, uh, uh, valuable piece to the building. The groups do use it, um, but we did that. So that's part of the reason why we switched this to a decision pack or to, uh, an actual capital improvement program. Instead of the decision packages, we just were getting to the life end of those components of the facility. And the facility is just going to break down and, and not be usable. And obviously it's extremely popular facility for us. So that shifted. Quickly going through the projects that were on the, um, CIP before, but may have shifted. Uh, development of Johnston Commons that has not really shifted much. Um, the playground, the shelter will both be in, late fall for parts of it, but, uh, mainly spring. The second part of that, year 23, 24 is a splash pad out there. As we get better numbers, that number may change down the road. Um, but for right now, we've kept that based on the estimates that we had from last year. Teresa alluded to the water trails, construction, uh, 700,000 that was shifted a year. One thing of note is the water trails because we have written grants and we've received funding over the first two phases. We do have a base amount, I believe approximately 300,000 or so that has not been spent in the first two phases. So we do have the capability of moving forward if, if we want some preliminary work done before that 700,000 is available. So we do have those options. Lou Clarkson master plan additions, nothing really has shifted with that. Just to, uh, familiarize everybody, that includes work for the softball complex in that area. It's, uh, new parking lot and, and trail system that goes along with that. That's pretty much complete out there. Next year will be a shelter or will be a restroom slash concessions, mainly restrooms. That's the biggest need from what I'm hearing from the softball. It'll also include, uh, all the infrastructure, um, lighting and that. In year three, we'll start looking at a playground, um, irrigation, some of those components for it as well. Those numbers also reflect some improvements that we're doing with Little League baseball. We brought all, all the, uh, bleachers up to code. They were out of code. So we brought those all up to code. And we're bringing some of the fence lines and, and dugouts up to code as well. They were a little shorter than the, the standard facility should be. So we're kind of making those improvements at the same time. Dewey Park improvements, as indicated, that's playground replacement and, uh, restroom replacement in the next few years. The bridge at the Bee Creek Natural Resource Area, um, that project is pretty much done. The two trail segments are in, the bridge has been stabilized, the shoreline has been stabilized. Uh, we just have some backfilling and seeding to do and that project will be done. Renovation of Crown Point, um, 24, 25 for 3.1 million. We got that estimate last year. Once again, high priority there. I think the biggest thing is, is figuring out how do we fund it? Cause it's outside the scope of a project that I can just, um, uh, get, uh, bond money for. North Park development that, uh, slid out a couple of years mainly because we're not seeing any of that development out, out north in the annexed area. Usually a park is going to be two or three years down the road after it starts happening. So, um, I feel fairly comfortable that that can be shifted way out. Cross-country soft trails, uh, scheduled for, uh, next year. That is just going to make some improvements for what currently is being used as cross-country skiing, um, a lot of runners, walkers and that use those areas. So making improvements, especially in some of the low areas and that to make it, uh, a little bit drier and, and more functional space. Adventure Ridge restroom, um, a couple of years out. We'll be continuing to work with the neighbors there on exact location and what that will look like. Dog park is getting close. Um, this is up Johnston Drive. It's, uh, adjacent to the senior housing that's, uh, being finished right now. Once that's complete, then we'll, we'll start developing that dog park. Really relatively simple. Bringing water in, putting fence line up and, and getting some play elements for the dogs. It's, it's not real, not real tough to, uh, set up a dog park there for that. Terra for canoe kayak launch. Um, this will be so it's easier for kayakers and canoers, especially novice, to be able to get into those pieces of equipment without feeling like they're tipping over all the time. Specific location for that is most likely at the north end of the lake, um, but we're not 100% positive. Storage building for Terra Park. Um, this will be basically where the wood chip pile is right now. We're starting to get enough equipment, kayaks, canoes, those types of things that are associated with Terra that we just don't have very good, uh, storage for. We want to get that stuff inside as much as we can. Park sign replacement. This thing is, uh, the bane of all evil in my world. We've been working on this since 2019. COVID has done a number on, on, uh, sign fabricators and that. So, um, we have all the footings in for these signs. They're being fabricated. We're hoping that we'll have those in. Um, thankfully, since we do have all the footings for the signs in at each of the parks, uh, we can install those this winter if they are actually done. So. Crosshaven East Park, um, this is adjacent to Crosshaven. Once again, another Crosshaven development that, uh, we'll be looking at a playground type area there. The terrace signs, similar. It's getting designed at the same time as the park signs. So, uh, hopefully those will be in place soon. Tresso Tresso Bridge replacement that shifted a year mainly because of, uh, the bid process that Polk County Conservation went through. Ignite, um, this is spread over three years. Basically what we have here is the first is just initial design development. That we'll be working with engineers to kind of get the layout of everything. First year, we'll look at the, the site amenities. Um, so making sure everything's turfed, um, grass. Getting those areas set, getting a playground, probably a little splash pad, those types of amenities in. Make sure all the trail systems through the park are set. The second year is, is a look at the possibility of putting field turf and lighting on the main soccer complex. Doing that mainly because everything else that Ignite's doing is going to be turfed, field turf with lighting. And so the use of going back and forth between the city project or city programs using Ignite and Ignite using ours, it'd be awfully nice to have all that similar as far as the quality goes. Ridgedale Heights Park improvement, uh, we have play, playground and shelter, um, over the next couple of years, starting in year 23, 24. Once again, that, that neighborhood is starting to develop out. So about a year from now, we want to start looking at putting that playground in. And then, uh, the final one, Trail Northwest 86, 62nd to 70th. That one's way out there. 350,000 reflects the engineering design of the trail. And then the construction would be in 26, 27 to get us between 62nd and 70th. Any questions? I know I went through those real quick.
Is it safe then to say, did I hear correctly that the Dewey Park improvements of 165, that, that money actually went toward the Johnston Commons?
Correct.
So that project was actually, uh, was it a 55,000?
Correct. Between the shelter and the, and the playground. The playground went from about a $190,000 playground to about 340,000 because it went to a full wheelchair accessible.
Any other quick questions? We need to roll into the regular council meeting here.
I, I've, on the Crown Point Community Center, I feel like obviously that's a major, how we decide and how we're going to fund that. And it, every year it shows up here and every year we say, we got to have a plan for, for, you know, how we're going to fund it. And we go another year and we haven't done anything more on it. So I think until we, we're going to have to, and it's, if, if you, especially if it's going to require some sort of bond referendum type effort, those are very challenging. And so.
Especially if it's for an individual small project like this.
Right. So if we're, if we're going to be serious about this, we've got to start moving on it because we.
Nice if there was some other project and I don't, I don't know if there is another one to tie it with.
That is exactly what you said last year, John. And I, and I think that's, and so, but I, we're, I think we've lost a year on that. So.
The only thing I can say, and I don't know where it would be at. I know there's some discussion about, uh, the north annexed area of needing public buildings up there. If the timing is right to tie those two projects together.
Anyway, I just think if we're going to move forward on a bond thing, we're, 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 we've not made any real progress on that. So.
Other questions? Thank you.
Okay. We have one item left on the, uh, work session that we could probably pick up at the back end of the regular council meeting, right?
You can do that.
Very good.